Good afternoon. We'd like to call the meeting of the Shreveport City Council to order. We'd like to say before we start, if you have your cell phone, we ask that you would turn it off or put it on silence. And at this particular time Pastor Arthur Douglas of the Evergreen Baptist Church will come and lead us in prayer, and Councilman Allen Jackson will lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Most gracious heaven and father, we come at this point in our time asking thy choice blessings upon the leaders here of our city. We pray that you would grant them the wisdom in order to make the right decisions for this city. We pray that you would keep them in your permissive and divine will. Each one that stand here, we pray that you would let them stand, father, with a sober and sound mind, and we'd be so careful to give you all the glory and all the praise in the blessed name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The flag of the United States of America is the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, big brother. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Bull. Councilwoman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilwoman Butcher. Councilman Jackson.
Present.
Councilman Gill.
I'm here.
And Councilman Bowman.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference Monday, April 11, 2022, and city council meeting Tuesday, April 12, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Any questions? If not, let's vote. Does any council member have any awards recognition or distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes? None? Mr. Mayor, do you have any awards recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank all the citizens that came out to the citywide cleanup this weekend. We had over 700 citizens sign up and that participated this weekend. They are estimating that we picked up eight tons of trash in our city, between eight and 8.5 tons of trash in our city. That's phenomenal because we got that trash picked up, but it's also bad because we had that much laying around. But I want to thank everybody that participated this weekend, and I want to give a bigger shout out to SPD who won the competition for cleaning up this weekend. Thank you, Shreveport Police Department. I don't see Chief Smith here. So thank you. Oh, he's outside, okay. So thank, thanks, Shreveport Police Department, and all the citizens that participated. Next, Mr. Chairman, I want to announce that we are having Property Standards is doing a district sweep in District F this weekend, so they'll be in your district. That'll be, or this week, sorry, that'll be on Wednesday, April 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and citizens can bring trash, debris, and tires for disposal to Airport Park at 6500 Kennedy Drive. So if you're in District F, please participate and bring anything that you have there. At this time, I would like to invite up Ms. Shelley Regal of Spar to talk about the Park's master plan, if she is present.
She's on her way.
She's on her way? Okay, all right, well, Mr. Chairman, we can hold or we can do it at the end.
It's up to you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we'll push it then, but quickly, and I know y'all are going to recognize, but I wanted to recognize Ms. Dottie Bell of the school board that's sitting in the audience with her sisters from Zeta Phi Beta. Yeah. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Dottie's a member of Zeta Phi. I thought Dottie was AKA when she'd be at my church.
I'm trying to be nice.
You have any other things, Mr. Mayor?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have any questions regarding property standards? Mr. Harris is coming.
Mr. Harris, thank you for those properties, follow up on those properties in Allendale. I appreciate that.
Your work.
Anything else, Mr. Harris? Thank you, Mr. Harris. Did anyone receive the revenue collection plan and implementation report, finance? Public hearings, we have none. We have Resolution Number 68 of 2022 to be added today. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor or against adding this resolution to the agenda? Seeing there is none, is there a motion to add this resolution to the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? All in favor, let's vote. Thank you, and that passes, and this item has been added. Today, we will hear public comments on agenda items only. We have requests to speak, and we ask that you would, you're speaking to three minutes. The first person we have is Mr. John Settle.
I'm confused about ordinance 2072. Of course, I'm confused about a lot of things, so it probably doesn't surprise you that. The published agenda only had one of the ordinances listed. I think that the ordinance had, only one was listed there and attached to it. When it was on the table two weeks ago, they had two or three amendments to the ordinance. And so I'm not sure what you're really considering today, because I believe what was attached to the published agenda was the first draft. For example, it doesn't, it has a limited number of A and E committee members. So I'm not sure that the open meetings law has been applied. Another question I have is in the third draft, Third Amendment, it references in paragraph seven, the Third Amendment, it says, section 26, 243, sub-paragraph five, it calls for a representative of, it said, these are the listed members of the A and E committee, it calls for representative of the disadvantaged business enterprise director, the DBE director. We do not have a DBE director, we have a fair share director. So if you're considering Amendment Three today, which is an exhaustive list of the A and E with an expanded committee, I believe that this needs to be checked on. So I am confused, but it's not the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the speaker is Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard apartment, M110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I'm speaking on Resolution 961. This is a really great and good idea, recognizing the month of April for 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. There have been a lot of people out there who have been doing this in the world, and since they're doing this, it's a bunch of nonsense. And it's just like to minors, and then they think that when they don't get reported or caught, that they're getting away with it, but they really need to stop that stuff. And they're doing it to other people as well. They can keep it secret if they want to, but if they think that they won't get reported for it or caught, they're wrong. It will find a way to get out if somebody does report it. And not only can it happen, it will happen. It could happen just about to anyone, anytime, anywhere, and they would need to speak up and say something at once, right away. So this kind of nonsense needs to just cease fire, just like a red light. So recognize the April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month for the month of April. This would really be a great thing. And also, even though it's not on, we need sensor cameras over in the Highland area to stop people from running red lights, because they're doing this, and even at the corner of Centenary and Olive, we need help right away. And I've seen it going on, and so have other people, and we want this to stop. Help us out if you could, please.
Thank you. Next, who will have the speaker is Mr. Marvin Mohammed. Mr. Marvin Mohammed, seeing that he's not here. We have no executive appointments today. There are no items on the consent agenda at this particular time. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed with agenda legislation?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I apologize about my tardiness, but I did want to recognize the, the project celebration for, for the sexual assault awareness.
Okay.
Do you want to do that now, or we can just take it up?
You can do it now.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, would you read that resolution, please?
We're just going to read it. We're just going to read it and vote on it in order?
Yeah.
Okay. A resolution to recognize April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Shreveport. Whereas, since 2001, National Sexual Violence Resource Center has coordinated the National Sexual Assault Awareness Month campaign observed every April. And whereas, this year's theme is building safe online spaces together. And whereas, for too long, harassment, cyberbullying, bullying, and exploitation have been seen as inevitable behaviors online. And whereas, during this month-long campaign, NSBRC is making it clear that everyone can practice consent, intervene when we see harmful behaviors, and promote safety and respect, both online and offline. And whereas, the goal of Sexual Assault Awareness Month is to raise public awareness about sexual violence, educate communities on how to prevent it, and bolster prevention efforts throughout the year. And whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month is an opportunity to educate how each of us can prevent sexual harassment, assault, and abuse. Sexual harassment online doesn't have to be inevitable. And whereas, 41% of Americans have been personally subjected to harassing behavior online, and an even larger share, 66%, have witnessed these behaviors directed at others. And whereas, nationwide, 81% of women and 43% of men report experience some form of sexual harassment and/or assault in their lifetime. And whereas, 1 in 5 women in the United States experience completed or attempted rape during their lifetime. And whereas, nearly a quarter, 24.8%, of men in the U.S. experience some form of contact sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas, it is estimated that 734,630 people were raped, including threatened, attempted, or completed in the U.S. in 2018. And whereas, preventing sexual violence means addressing the root causes, including beliefs about gender equality, forms of oppression such as racism, transphobia, and ableism, and social systems that reinforce power over others. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the city of Shreveport, acting at due regular and legal session convene, that the City Council hereby recognizes April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, would you like to come up? I want to, I want to personally thank y'all for everything that you've done. I think this is the fourth year that we've done this, at least as a city council, and I know what a valuable part you play in, in our community, both for sexual assault and domestic violence. We're very lucky to have an organization like Project Celebration here in Caddo Parish and Northwest Louisiana for that matter. So I want to turn the floor over to you, where you can kind of explain what this month is and what it means, but just know that from me, and I believe the rest of this council, and our law enforcement that works very closely with you, that y'all are very much appreciated, and, and I'm sure the mayor as well.
Yes. Thank you for your continued support. Thank you for the city of Shreveport, the SPD.
Pull your, pull your mic down a little bit.
Oh, so you're saying I'm challenging the height area, right? Well, just thank you guys so much for always recognizing us. This is hard work and hard work. 1,500 people hit our hotline every year. We serve over 300 people in Caddo, Bojor, and Webster parishes. We go to seven parishes in the state of Louisiana to provide services for those who will be sexually violated, whether it's harassment, or rape, or incest, all facets of sexual violence. This is something that's taboo to talk about, but it happens here. Every 68 seconds, 1 in 4 girls and 1 in 6 boys will be sexually assaulted before their 18th birthday. And if anyone follows Timmy Lane and other people who report, I saw yesterday that a 2-year-old was assaulted. So every case about sexual violence, we are connected. We offer free counseling, support group, we help with, I probably shouldn't say this, we help with rent, first months' rent, deposits, just try to help people get back on their feet after this traumatic event, and it affects their mental health. So I've been doing this work for 22 years, y'all. I have on my heart the stories of people who are hurting in this city. I don't take my job lightly, and I thank all of you for doing what you do, because this is hard sitting up here. And I thank y'all so much. I thank the survivors that I serve. I get to do this work. I didn't look forward, it chose me, and I thank God for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and y'all keep up the good work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed with regular, regular agenda legislation?
Resolution 165, approving a restoration tax abatement renewal application for Venu Solutions LLC, 601 Mylum Street.
Madam Clerk, so that our guests won't have to wait, I'd just like to put a pause on that. Councilman Bowman would like to recognize his guests that he has here today, and then we'll proceed back with that.
I apologize about that. Put down with the Zetas. I have the Zetas here today. And if they were, if you were coming to the front, and if you could read that for me, please, down.
Resolution 46 of 2022, a resolution to congratulate and celebrate Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Zeta Iota, Zeta Chapter for their 60 years of dedicated service. Whereas, the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Zeta Iota Zeta Chapter was chartered April 20, 1962, and will celebrate 60 years of dedicated service this year. And whereas, the 12 charter members were sororors Mary Amos, Diola Goodwin, Ernie May Odom, Rosa Rice, Clara A. Bennett, Johnny S. Martin, Ruby T. Powell, Juanita Rollins, Doris Breckenridge, Ruby Newton, Mildred Quarles, and Virgie Lee Specks. Whereas, the chapter membership increased in less than two years after it was chartered, and there was a euphoria of excitement whenever and whenever the chapter did activities publicly. And whereas, an impressive finer womanhood observance was held in Minden, Louisiana, which included the auxiliary group IZ Girls, and the first Ms. IZ Girl was Beatrice Tony in 1963, who is now a member of the Zeta Iota Zeta. Whereas, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Zeta Iota Zeta Chapter brought to the Shreveport, Bojor City, Barksdale, and surrounding areas the late classic, multi-talented Earl Grant, and the periodic preservation of Earl Grant was a Zeta Iota Zeta Project until his untimely death. And whereas, over the years, with members moving to other states and some relocating to Shreveport, the chapter was large enough to make feasible two chapters in the city of Shreveport. And whereas, the chapter has been very active in traditions of Founder's Day, finer womanhood observance, pledge renewal, reclamation, scholarships, and awards, voter registration drives, Z Hope, Storks Nest Youth Groups, and Amica Auxiliary. And whereas, a celebration will be held in honor of one living charter member, soror Juanita Rollins Adams, on April 22nd to the 24th of 2022. And whereas, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Zeta Iota Zeta Chapter desires that they will live on forever, increase membership, and continue to provide numerous services to the community in an effort to help others excel through mind, body, and spirit. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the city of Shreveport, acting at due regular and legal session convene, that the City Council hereby congratulates and celebrates the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Zeta Iota Zeta Chapter for their 60 years of dedicated service.
I don't know if, Ms. Irma, would you like to introduce who all you have here? And then I think the boss there will speak, standing in the middle.
Yes, on behalf of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Zeta Iota Zeta Chapter, please allow me to say thank you for your support and for your presentation here today. Standing with me today, first, I am Marcy Collins. I'm the president of Zeta Iota Zeta Chapter. I have chapter members here, Irma Rogers, I know you all know, Dottie Bell, and Kathleen Johnston. But we just want to say again, thank you so much. Since her debut 102 years ago, our sorority has been changing the world while upholding the principles of scholarship, service, sisterhood, and finer womanhood. And we are so proud to say that for 60 years, we've had the honor to do so here in our community. So yes, it was a blessing to celebrate our 60th chapter anniversary for five days, beginning last Wednesday, with the support of our city. So as the finer women in this community, we say thank you for embracing us for 60 years, and we are looking forward to 60 more years of serving our community. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, come down with me, and the mayor, please take a picture with you all. And did, Ms. Bell, I know you always got something to say. I know you got something to say.
Good evening, everybody. And I'm so sorry that the chairman thought I was part of the AKA, but it's always the blue and white, the best of all, okay? And I just want to say, when you cross that bridge, you see the blue lights, think about us, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, one of the best. And also, I'm going to say this, our president of the pan is here. You will see us again on the first week in August. We're going to celebrate all Divine Nine, which is all sororities and fraternities that's in the Shreveport area. So I will be back. So now we're talking about the best, and that's blue and white. Thank you, Councilman, for doing this for us.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
While you're coming down, if I may, I'd like to thank the city, the parish, and our state representative Glover for the blue lights on the I-49 bridge. I know on the Bukowski Bridge, they started out blue in April in honor of autism, which I'm a part of that, too. But we'd just like to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Don't get on the mill.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, the president of the Pan Atlantic that Ms. Bell referenced is our very own Mr. Martimer Harris over sitting in the corner of Property Standards. So I'm sure he's going to be the one facilitating the, the meeting in the beginning of August that she was talking about.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, now, Madam Clerk, we are back to 165. We won't have any interruptions.
Resolution 165, approving a restoration tax abatement renewal application for Venu Solutions LLC, 601 Mylum Street.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Any questions?
Sir, if you don't mind, I just wanted to make a statement about this. After several months of going back and forth about it, I want to thank the team from Venu, as well as Mr. Drew Mouton, for working to come to some compromises about how to achieve the original intent, which was to bring downtown workers into the building on top of the renovation of the building, so that we don't have light in downtown. You preserved a beautiful building. You have provided us a tier, is it a tier three data center? Thank you. And you have also, since we've started these discussions, created an incentive rate for a new tenant and made a commitment to allow some tenant improvement allowances, and you've hired a Realtor, a local Realtor, to help market the building. And we appreciate that. It's a good start, and it does set a higher standard for what we do for our tax abatements moving forward. And I appreciate your support from my colleagues. Thanks.
Anyone else? If not, let's vote.
Cares with seven.
Resolution 24, authorizing the employment of legal counsel to represent the city of Shreveport. And there is one amendment to this. Amendment one, it deletes and removes from the files the original proposed Resolution 24 of 2022, and substitutes the attached amendment number one to Resolution 24 of 2022. And this amendment now includes a retainer agreement and corrects typos in the fact sheet.
We're going to ask for a postponement coming from our city attorney. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman, that this be postponed. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
What, what kind of timeframe are we looking to bring this back up?
I have been in contact with Mr. Jones. Unfortunately, he had a family emergency, so he wasn't able to get back with me, and so that's why I said it be postponed today.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven, postpone.
Resolution 44, authorizing the mayor to execute an off-airport land lease between the city of Shreveport and the Federal Aviation Administration. And there is one amendment. Amendment one, deletes and removes from the files the original proposed fact sheet to Resolution Number 44 of 2022, and substitutes, substitutes the attached revised fact sheet to Resolution 4422, and adds the enclosed statute into the resolution's exhibits. The explanation, this amendment encloses one additional exhibit into the list of exhibits for the resolution, a copy of Louisiana Revised Statute 52, Section 1. This exhibit to the resolution is now labeled as Exhibit F, Louisiana Revised Statute 52, Section 1, and is added to the listing of attachments in the attachments section of the revised fact sheet. There's no other change in language or provisions of the fact sheet or resolution.
Motion on the amendment? So moved. Moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by the chair. Any questions? Not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Motion on the ordinance that is amended? So moved. Moved by Councilman Butcher, seconded by the chair. Any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Resolution 55, authorizing the execution of a retainer agreement with Attorney Scott J. Chafin relative to certain consent decree matters.
So moved. Moved by Councilman Bowman.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? Seeing there's none, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Resolution 56, authorizing the approval of a price change in entering a contract with Holmat Corporation for the purchase of 1825 cubic yard rear loader packers.
Go to postpone.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Nicholson to postpone. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven, postpone.
Resolution 58, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, purchasing agent to reject all bids received for the flower bed maintenance Hollywood Monkhouse Elvis Presley Boulevard and Kennedy Broadway bid, RFQ 22-509.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions? Not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Resolution 59, authorizing the city of Shreveport- Resolution 59, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana purchasing agent to reject all bids received for the replace roof on Lucas Administration Building bid, RFQ 22-516.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Bootcher, second by the Chair. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let's vote.
That motion cares with seven.
Resolution 60, adopting the system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the state of Louisiana.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bootcher. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Resolution 61, to recognize April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bootcher, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Resolution 68, to support House Bill Number 773 filed in the 2022 Regular Session of the Louisiana Legislature, relative to the transfer of certain state property in Caddo Parish to the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would welcome some explanation of this. I favor it, but I think the public would benefit from that.
If I may?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. So what's happened is, with the movement of the state employees to the downtown to Wagner Building, it opens up Jordan Street, Jordan at Fairfield. And what would normally happen, or one thing that could potentially happen at the state level, is that the property could be auctioned off, which would leave us with limited buy-in on what actually happens in that space. But if we're able to, through this legislation at the state, through this bill, if we're able to donate the property, or not donate the property, but allow the local redevelopment authority to oversee the RFP process, then we can actually have public transparency and public comment and public buy-in on what actually happens with that property versus someone coming in and doing, buying the property for peanuts and doing who knows what with it, and us having no control. So that's ultimately what the, what the legislation is about, is us supporting that at the state level.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with the introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to May 10, 2022?
Resolution 62, authorizing the Mayor to execute certain documents and instruments relative to the subordination of the loan and mortgage relating to Coventry Place Limited Partnership. Resolution 63, declaring certain city of Shreveport, Louisiana supplies, materials, and equipment, specifically vehicles, to be surplus and to authorize the purchasing agent or her designated seller to dispose of said surplus property by public auction. Resolution 64, authorizing the Mayor of the city of Shreveport to consent to the partial assignment of an undivided 25% interest in Pine Wave Energy Partners Operating LLC of an oil and gas lease to Mammoth Minerals LLC and FPCC USA Inc. Resolution 65, authorizing the Mayor of the city of Shreveport to consent to the partial assignment of an undivided 30% interest by Mammoth Minerals LLC of two oil and gas leases to FPCC USA Inc. Resolution 66, authorizing the Mayor of the city of Shreveport to sign a consent of the assignment by Pine Wave Energy Partners Operating LLC of three oil and gas leases to Silver Hill Haynesville ENP LLC. Resolution 67, employing professionals with respect to the issuance by the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, of not exceeding $70,650,000 of general obligation bonds in one or more series on a taxable or tax exempt basis.
Any questions on any of these items? If not, is there a motion to introduce these resolutions?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Bowman. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to May 10, 2022?
Ordinance 55, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 56, amending the 2022 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 57, amending the 2022 General Fund budget. Ordinance 58, amending the 2022 budget for the General Fund. Ordinance 59, declaring certain city property to be surplus property. Ordinance 60, authorizing an encroachment into the city's public right-of-way located on a portion of Dean Road and Cedar Creek Drive, as more fully described herein, and to authorize the Mayor or his designated to execute an encroachment permit with Pine Wave Energy. Ordinance 61, to amend Chapter 102, Article 2 and 3A of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, relative to vehicle for higher fees and taxicab fares. Ordinance 62, zoning case number 21-223-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south side of Stoner Avenue, approximately 260 feet east of Cresswell Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R3 multifamily residential district to C1 neighborhood commercial district. Ordinance 63, zoning case number 22-5-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Yuri Drive, approximately 200 feet south of King Place, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I1 Light Industrial District to IMU Industrial Mixed Use District. Zoning case number 22-16-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Stevens Road and Flornoy Lucas Road, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R17 Single Family Residential District to R17 Single Family Residential District PUD Planned Unit Development District.
Thank you. Are there any questions on any of these items? If not, is there a motion to introduce these ordinance?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Fuller. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance 72, to amend certain portions of Chapter 26 of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances, relative to the architectural and engineering selection process. And I believe the intention is just to take up Amendment 3.
Yes. Motion to take up Amendment 3.
Amendment 3, it deletes and removes from the files the original proposed ordinance number 72 of 2021, and substitutes the attached amendment number 3 to ordinance number 72 of 2021. And this amendment finalizes the work that was started by the Subcommittee of the A&E Committee.
So moved on the amendment.
I'll second the motion and request brief discussion.
It was moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Nicholson. And now, the discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman John Settle, Mr. Settle raised several issues with the legislation as amended. Does the author or the sponsor think that requires further postponement?
Is Ms. Brown, is it okay for the city attorney's office to address the issues that were brought up by Mr. Settle as it pertains to DBE?
Good evening. I heard the comments during public comment, the ones in which I'll be referencing is the concern about Amendment 3, the proposed Section 26 243, the selection committee, the members as it relates, and as it relates to number 5. The disadvantaged business enterprise director is laid out in Section 2 403 of the statute of the charter of the ordinances. And in that is where you find the Department of, you find the Department of Fair Share Programs. So this is the appropriate name for the Department of Fair Share and the individuals who work in that department. And so based on the legislation as it's laid out, I made the, I drafted the legislation to include the individuals as defined in the ordinance.
If none of my colleagues have an issue with this, nor willing to adopt it today, I don't want to delay it if we don't need to. But I'm open to your concerns. Does the administration have anything to add? Because this is the amendment offered by the administration.
Yeah. Yeah, the administration, we fully support Amendment 3.
I didn't, I don't understand it either, so I'm not basically prepared to vote on it today because I don't have any sense of understanding of it.
Substitute motion to postpone?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, substitute motion to postpone, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman and any other council members, the administration's open. We should have conversations. I haven't had direct conversations with every council member, so I will be happy to talk about the change, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
It just new to me. I just didn't know, I didn't know what the Amendment 3 was.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed?
Motion cares with seven, postpone.
Ordinance 46, to amend Section 90-124 of Chapter 90 of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances, relative to certain types of trucks being prohibited on certain streets.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bootcher. Any questions? There are no questions, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Ordinance 47, amending the 2022 Budget for the Capital Projects Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Bootcher. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to actually preempt by saying this is next to, this is on Tulane at Linwood. There is a property at the, where that street dead ends that is zoned, and has been zoned since probably the 50s, as industrial. And the trucks use Tulane Road constantly throughout the day and night. And this could be something that, if there were another thoroughfare they could use, we could consider prohibiting the trucks from that street. However, the neighbors, the residents in that street have been suffering for several years with craters on that street. We've done patch jobs, but the whole street needed a redesign, and that's going to take more money in order to complete the project, so that they can have a drivable street. As it is, the community has just had a really, really hard time just getting up and down the street. They've suffered a lot, they've sustained car damage, and unsafe driving conditions. So I'd appreciate your support.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just note that this would authorize a $1 million expenditure. And I'm, I don't doubt the necessity of it, and if it's the pleasure of the council that we approve that expenditure, I'll join my colleagues. But, you know, the best way to allocate street special revenue funds is to have a systemic process driven by citywide data. And I know we're working toward getting there, but this is not a $50,000 or $100,000 small project. This is a very large million-dollar project that we're about to approve if we approve this today. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Boot.
My only concern about this, and I was at the crime lab a couple of weeks ago, I think, with the Chairman and Councilwoman Taylor. I mean, it's like a lake out there when it rains. I mean, this is, we've got this multimillion-dollar crime center that we just gave money to help fund, and the road's almost a gravel road going to it. So it needs to be done, not to mention the residents factor. But my only concern is this, if we do spend this million dollars, how long is it going to be before the road's messed up again because of these trucks? Is there any other alternative for them to enter into their?
Actually, there doesn't seem to be. When you look at the map of it, there's not really another way for them to get in and out. If they go up any other street, it causes the same truck, the same issues on any other asphalt street in the exact same area.
Do they abut any of our property that we have on Mansfield Road and then the Public Works, it's not going to be used anymore? Isn't that pretty close?
Could be, but I'm not quite sure.
Okay. I'm gonna vote for this because I think those people over there need the relief, and I also hate to see we have a huge investment sitting on that corner that is on pretty much a horrible street. But I would encourage possibly engineering or somebody to maybe look at if there's any other way to access that property at the end, maybe even with a gravel road for them to get down to, to keep those heavy trucks off this new street.
Would the city engineer like to speak to this?
We did look at other possible solutions as a new route. There's not a practical or feasible route. It would be acquiring a new right-of-way and building a new road, which would be very expensive. It could be done, but this was...
Yeah, for one piece of property, it'd be kind of cost prohibitive to do that, I understand.
And, and, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
But also, the citizens can barely drive down the road now. So to acquire property and build a new road, we're talking about probably four or five years. We're, these people need a road now.
Well, yeah, and I'm not wanting to delay that. I'm just talking about something in the future where we're not down to doing this again because it's only going to get torn up. Are you, or is this road being designed to a different standard than your typical neighborhood street?
It will be built to withstand the truck traffic.
Okay.
So we can, we can build to withstand it now, or we can continue to patch it, which over time is going to end up being a bigger expense.
It, the portion furthest west, it's a more narrow section, and it will remain a narrow section. That is a compromise that we looked at for design. To make it wider, to allow the trucks and the residents to pass in a decent manner, would require property acquisition and utility relocation and adding years to the project. So we've considered the issues, and we think that this is the best compromise to, for a good solution, to address it as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Patrick, how long will this be before you, before this be designed and put out to be?
This, this project, we already have an engineer working on the design for a large group of streets. So as soon as this, if this budget amendment's approved, we will task them to design it. So, and that, let me just add, that is kind of one of the longest processes we have, is getting an engineer in place to design. So since that's already in place, it will move a lot quicker. This would probably go to construction in 2023.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, let's vote.
Councilman Nicholson, go ahead. Motion cares with seven.
Ordinance 48, amending the 2022 Budget for the Street Special Revenue Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Ordinance 49, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2022 Street Special Revenue Fund Budget, appropriating the funds authorized herein.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Ordinance 50, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2022 Capital Projects Fund Budget, appropriating the funds authorized herein.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Ordinance 51, levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of 11.3180 mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year 2022, and for the purpose of paying principal and interest on the outstanding general obligation bonds of the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion cares with seven.
Ordinance 52, levying and authorizing... Ordinance fifty-two, levying and authorizing the collection of various taxes totaling seventeen point seven seven zero mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year twenty-twenty-two, and the amounts and for the purposes described herein.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance fifty-three, levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of nine point zero four zero mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the bounds of the downtown development district of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, as defined by LARS thirty-three twenty-seven forty point three eight for the year twenty-twenty-two, and the amounts and for the purposes described herein.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance fifty-four, to amend Chapter forty-six, Medical Services, Section one oh two, Application Procedure five, Vehicle Compliance of the Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by the chair. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be ruled from the table today?
Not that I'm aware of, Chair.
We have no property standards MPC, ZBA, or ABO appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Are there any reports from offices, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
Yes, we received a letter of appointment for fire chief, Mr. Clarence Reese Junior, subject for confirmation on May tenth.
Thank you. Matt Perkins, do you have any additional communication?
Yes, I'd like to have Director Shelley Regal come up, but Shelley's still in the audience.
All right, Shelley.
To talk about the master plan for parks and recreation.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come and talk to you. I sent an email out this weekend to all of you about some activities that are going on in your districts, and I hoped you received that, but I wanted us to take a minute not only to introduce you to the project manager of the master plan, but also just give you the opportunity to know what we'll be doing. We have seven public meetings, four of them are in the city, three of them are in the parish. This is a master plan for recreation parish-wide. We partner with Caddo Parish to do this. This is our second one, and the last, we completed one in two thousand and seven. And master plans are really important for recreation. It talks, it lets us know what the community wants in their park system, it drives programming, it, it drives how we communicate, and most of all, it drives our capital projects. Our two thousand and seven master plan actually is what helped us develop our projects for the two thousand and eleven bond issue. So all of these are important, and we went to the community listening sessions, people talked a lot about their parks and the things they would like to see. So we hope, there's a whole lot of ways to get this information, and I'm going to let Jacob Haynes come up here, he's the project manager with SBJ Consultants, who are doing the master plan, and give you a little introduction of what's going to be going on.
Yep. Thank you, Shelley. So again, Jacob Haynes with SBJ Group. We are a engineering and surveying company out of Baton Rouge. I'm a landscape architect by trade, doing the parks and planning portion of this. So as Shelley said, this master plan is really important. We're in the early stages of this project, which is really the, the most important stage, which is gathering the public input. So that's why we're, we're reaching out to you and letting you know about these meetings that we have going on, because we really need your input. This is really going to lay the groundwork for what we're doing in the later stages of the project. So the project is split into a couple of phases, really that we're in the gathering, data gathering phase right now. The second phase will be looking at park standards, national standards, and tailoring that to Caddo Parish and the city of Shreveport. The next phase, the third phase, will be applying those standards to the data that we gather in the next couple of weeks. And then the last stage will be to put together that in a report that we can publish to you guys and get some further input to tweak that, and then use that document as the guiding, driving force for the projects moving forward, like Shelley said, for the next, for the future of the Parks Department. So again, we have several meetings coming up over the next two weeks. We also have a survey that we've launched just last week. That's about forty-five questions, really hitting all of the aspects of the parks that we need input on. So there are several ways you can look at those. You can go to the SPAR website or the Caddo Parish Parks website. There's links for both the survey and the meeting dates on that. We have several of these signs and banners that we've put around properties around the city, as well as all the community centers that have information, and we have some note cards here that we can leave with a group that has more info and a QR code for the survey. So again, we really want your input on this and look forward to hearing, hearing from you. Thank you.
Any questions from council members? Comments?
He said you'll see these throughout the city, and it's got the QR code, so if you have your phone, just snap it, and you can take that survey at your convenience. There'll be flyers in our rec centers where people can take it without having to use their phone if they don't want to, so there's all kinds of ways, but we really want to gather people's information. So please share these cards with people in your district, because we know, the one thing we heard when we were out there on those listening sessions is that people care about their parks and what happens in them. So thank you, and thank you, Count Chairman, for the time. You run a tight ship, and I was, sorry I was late.
Shelley, I thought you loved me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you have anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Does any council member have any additional communication? Thank you. At this particular time, we have a request from the city attorney to go in executive session to discuss the following. Madam Clerk, would you read those?
MSH Investment Properties LLC, Versity of Shreveport, number six-two-six-one-six-eight B, First Judicial District Court. Awad Hassan, Versity of Shreveport, six-two-six-one-six-seven A, First Judicial District Court, and number five-four-four-three-one C.A., Louisiana Second Circuit Court of Appeal. BHP Bilaton Petroleum Properties, N.A.L.P., at all, adversary case number twenty-one dash zero-one-zero-zero-five, anniversary case number twenty-one dash zero-one-zero-zero-seven, U.S. District Court, Western District of Louisiana, Shreveport Division, Gladstone Area Partnership, Inc., and Swan Apartments LLC, and Ashley M. Atkins, Versity of Shreveport, Lakeshore Liquor Beer and Wine Two LLC, and Chris Caston, First Judicial District Court, six-zero-five-six-three-nine, Louisiana Second Circuit Court of Appeal, five-four-three-four-nine C.A.
Thank you. At this particular time, we ask that you would clear the chamber, and I need a motion that we would go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor, that we go into executive session. All in favor, will you vote?
Motion carries with six, one out of ten.